Welcome to UMDF's Ask the Mitro Doc Monthly Webcast. Tonight, we will hear from a wonderful panel who will provide great information, not only for the newly diagnosed, but helpful information for anyone navigating their mito disease journey. We have with us Dr. Rebecca Genetski and Colleen Marriersky from Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, Dr. Sumit Perik from Cleveland Clinic, and Patricia Arnold from UT Health in Houston. Our moderator to kick us off this evening is our very own Margaret Moore, UMDF Support and Education Associate. Let's get started, Margaret.
Welcome everyone to this very important Ask the Mitro Doc Webcast for our newly diagnosed patients, but I really believe that tonight what you're going to learn is what would impact a patient anywhere they are in their journey. So I'm glad that you're with us today. We always want to thank our sponsors. We've added a new sponsor to our support and education meetings, Reneo, but thank you EFL Trees, Charitable Trust, UCB, and Reneo for your support. Now it's time to get started. I want to welcome Dr. Genetski, Dr. Perik, Colleen, all of you back onto the, to the screen. So put your cameras back. Hey, Patricia, I see you all. Again, thank you so much for joining us today. We're excited about this topic. Again, what you don't know is when new patients reach out to us, this is what I give them. This is what I will send to them once this recording is completed. And for our guests, please know that this event is being recorded and will be available on our YouTube channel post-event. So take it away. I believe Colleen is going to get us started.
Yes. Well, welcome everyone. I'm gonna just go through some slides to get everyone's information jogging. So please put some questions into the Q and A while I'm talking so that everyone can get their questions answered. We talk about this a lot with new patients as they're newly diagnosed or suspected to have mitochondrial disease. You know, it's really overwhelming and you know, there's a lot of mixed feelings with stress. There's grief, mourning, loss of what to expect with yourself or your loved ones. And then with this journey comes a lot of decisions, you know, with how to make kind of what specialists to see, hearing about the diagnosis, really where to go from there. And in some cases, this is where a family's journey really begins with understanding what might be their cause. And even if they don't have an underlying genetic confirmation yet, this might lead to more testing and other evaluations to really help them decide. And really kind of establishing a great care team will help to navigate this. A lot of patients, when they have a new diagnosis, can have a lot of mixed feelings. Some can be relieved with having an answer. There can be mixed emotions knowing that answer, or possibly, you know, when we talk about individual mitochondrial disease, some of these might be really rare. We don't have a large cohort of patients yet, so prognosis might still be unknown. But really what kind of helps with understanding this is connecting with other families or organizations like UMDF. And a lot of times, our families unfortunately have been on a long journey. So this may end their diagnostic odyssey, but a lot new questions arise. So hopefully that's what tonight you'll be able to ask some of those questions that have been coming up. I won't go over too much on this slide, but really understanding that collectively mitochondrial disease is not so rare with a prevalence of 1 in 4,300. But the really hard part of it is no matter where you enter into the medical system, really can be any symptom at any age of onset. And that's why the diagnosis can be sometimes difficult, but improving. We do a lot of education across all the specialists that see these patients. But you know, some of the symptoms can be really nonspecific. So these can look a lot like other conditions. But with access to more genetic testing, there's even support with the UMDF with helping with getting free genetic testing when insurance has denied it, really has been helping to expedite that process and hopefully decreasing that diagnostic timeline for everyone. Thinking at first, really, who should be on the care team? I think it's overwhelming when you can see all the symptoms listed in an individual with mitochondrial disease, but that doesn't mean you need to have all those symptoms or all those individuals on your care team. It really goes by what symptoms you and your family have, you know, that really will dictate who is needed on your care team. I know not everyone unfortunately is able to be near a large center. So some patients may just come out once a year to these larger centers to have kind of that mito specialist that really understands or is on top of the research and drug trials that are happening. And then they have their local team that really follows them on a day-to-day basis. You also still need a very good primary care doctor or pediatrician that can help you with your general, you know, questions and concerns. You know, the sad part is in pediatrics and adults is very different. And you know, pediatrics, you know, there are larger institutions that have complex care pediatricians that really can help patients who have multiple specialists, kind of keeping things in the loop, or if they have numerous hospitalizations, adult care facilities are working, you know, I think to care for these more complex patients, but we still have some growth to do in that arena. And these are some common specialists, which even on this panelist, you'll see kind of that array with metabolic physicians, neurologists, and social workers that really can span the horizon of what specialists are needed. Unfortunately, talking about a diagnosis, and at least in the US, you can't really talk about that without understanding your health insurance, which is getting more complex, but also transparent in other ways. So understanding your plan and really what your options are before selecting it. So if this is newer in your journey, or you're switching employers, or you know your plans coming up, really understanding like who's in your network, what would this cost look like to you all? And that can really help for planning, or at least as best you can for the unpredictability. Secondary insurance is also amazing. All states are very different on what would qualify for secondary insurance, and this really supplements your primary plans. This could be both Medicaid's or Medicare's. And then understanding all the insurance lingo is like an understanding another language on top of your diagnosis. You get a medical degree as well as a financial aid degree. But there are resources for that as well. There's case managers, which you can request through your insurance plan to really help, which can aid in your authorization referrals, especially when you're seeking care outside of your state. This can get very complex. And most larger institutions are working to help with this. There is lots of acts now as part of care transparencies that individuals know a little bit more about their upfront costs. But this is still an overgrowing burden for families in understanding this aspect of care. Other things to think about, what other resources are available. So what happens when you might not be able to work anymore? Or you have a child that really needs a lot more attention? And you know, you're trying to figure out what options might be available to supplement income. So understanding social security types of disability plans and what really defines that, so that can really help you and your family make the best decision. Sometimes, you know, embedded into each specialty, there might be a social worker that might be able to help navigate and understand what might be available in your county and understanding this. Thinking about other resources, of course, FMLA, if you need to take a leap of absence, you know, to really get your health in order, or for your loved ones, thinking about early intervention programs and what resources would be available there, and kind of how to age the child through that system and still get additional services, understanding those plans. And then, of course, legal options. So as individuals who are very fortunate, we're getting better at diagnosing patients, but we're also getting better at caring for patients. That also means these individuals are aging through our medical system. And once they become 18 legally, they're recognized as an adult. And that can become complex. Not only are you maybe transitioning specialists to adult providers, but then it comes down to who can make decisions, sign consents for individuals. So really understanding what options are available. So there's something called guardianship, which kind of takes more of the ownership away from the individual onto the caretaker. But then there's also levels of power of attorney. So really kind of trying to get those in a row, whether your loved one has intellectual disabilities or other physical limitations that might impact their ability to make medical decisions independently. And then, of course, finances. I think this is something people don't like to talk about, but it really can be a huge burden, but there's also a lot of great resources that can help with reducing that burden. It's not always income-based. So understanding that this could just be based on diagnosis, lots of organizations, and talking with other families. If you see they have, you know, certain equipment or other assistance, ask them how they received it. Did they go through their insurance? Did they have an additional resource? Did it get donated from another family? And so there might be other avenues to explore, because obviously, thinking about medical expenses like nursing support coverage, breast fit care, there's other equipment grants, medical supply grants. And these can vary from state to state, and sometimes even within institutions, there might be resources such as if you have a prolonged stay within a hospital, they might have abilities to offset some of that from traveling back and forth, as well as some bills on the interim. As we were talking, you know, there's not mito care centers yet, unfortunately, in every state. To traveling to one of these larger programs can be costly for families, but there are a lot of great travel arrangements, a lot of flight options, Ronald McDonald houses that are around. And sometimes even within the institution, they have additional grants that individuals can apply for to really help the family and their loved ones get to where they need to go. Thinking about medical supply grants, I feel like, you know, these things are now fortunately post-COVID, coming back, there was a little bit of a lull in some things, but Mitro Action has a grant that can be applied for, some of these are one-time. There's alternatives in motion which can help with different mobility equipment. I'm really just kind of asking the questions. For example, you know, in the state of Pennsylvania, recently, the chairlifts are supplied to patients who have governmental insurance, so whether it's Medicaid or Medicare. But we wouldn't have known that until we started asking those types of questions. So they're able to be installed free of charge. And then medications, these are hugely costly. And so thinking about how to compare prices, where else could you find other medications that are still good pharmaceutical grade, and talking with your doctors really to kind of understand what's going to work best for you and your family. And compound pharmacies, which can put medications all-in-one, might make it easier and offset some of that cost too, rather than buying things individually. And thinking about a diagnosis, obviously, a lot of other questions come out where it's, what does this mean for my loved one, or you know, my other children, the rest of my family? And this is really where having a conversation with your care team will be best, because we can help to offset that information. We can have a family letter that might make this easier in telling individuals. We could have kind of a group session with numerous family members, which sometimes have worked really nicely, and others really just need time to process it. And you know, sharing your story with others, I give you all a lot of credit. That takes a lot of courage. And then it also, you know, a lot of questions. So figuring out what that means, when to maybe offer testing to other family members or your other children, you know, that's important to understand. I won't belabor this point, but understanding that a mitochondrial disease inheritance fortunately is very complex. So our disorders are not straightforward. It can really have a recurrence risk all across the spectrum. It can be maternally inherited. It could be brand-new in the individual. It can be, we call recessive or dominant, meaning there's different inheritance risk to all of that. So just saying someone has a mitochondrial disease does not really help determine what does that mean, because we now know there are over 300, 400 plus of these conditions. So understanding this will really help to guide you and your family to make the most for your decision-making for testing as well as family planning. And lastly, in thinking about, which is really exciting, because I feel like each year, we have more and more partners. I saw someone comment that, yes, there's pharmaceutical sponsors, which is really exciting. You know, we need research. And so continuing to move this field forward is really what kind of helps to expand our knowledge. So finding other patients that have the same condition, understanding the mechanisms of all of these different genes so that we can best treat them. We know it's not going to be a one shoe fits all for therapy. And the exciting thing is, there's a lot of therapies being offered, but really trying to understand, which is a lot, what does this mean? So clinical trials might need a drug therapy. You might be receiving a placebo, which is not the medication at some point, and as well as maybe being offered the drug afterwards. Natural history studies, which are just as important, so we really can understand the course of the condition so that when there is an intervention such as a medication, we really have the best outcomes and the best information to go to the FDA with, which is a very large natural history study ongoing with the UMDF right now. And you know, in some ways, it's a good problem to have. We have a growing number of drug trials now, but I think that makes it also complex for patients. So really, where, what trial should you participate in? UMDF does have a really nice resource. You can look up trials to see if you're eligible. There's also clinicaltrials.gov. And then, you know, finding that mito doctor or your local team, that really is going to figure out which one's going to be the best fit for you. Some of them might be just too timely, where you might not be able to participate, or just from a mechanistic standpoint, that one might not be the most pertinent for your disease, and another one might be more appropriate. But of course, research is always voluntary. So you know, we need it to move forward, but that doesn't mean if that's not the right time for you, you know, that this wouldn't be, impact your clinical care in any way. And I think the biggest take-home, of course, you're all here tonight, that, you know, you're not alone on this journey. Like I said, this has been an exciting few years in mitochondrial medicine, seeing all the drug trials and more diagnosis and testing. But you know, I think this is only building the community, which is more powerful. And so hopefully, you all kind of get that sense of camaraderie with the UMDF and your care teams that really kind of moving forward to that best care model for you and your family. And I will stop there so we can take other questions and answers.
All right. If you want to get started on the question and answers that were placed in the Q and A, we can get started there. I thought this was an interesting question for you, Dr. Perik. I see that you're beginning to answer it, but I do think that this is a question that would benefit the entire group. What do, what do parents tell their children when they ask about their futures? So they have children. What's the future going to look like? How do you approach that within the clinical setting?
So no, I was just about to say that this is actually, you know, a very tough question for a parent to answer, or even have to deal with from a young child. And I can imagine it's a scary discussion to have. I think from our side, a lot of how we deal with this would depend on the age of the child and the kind of question they're asking. As many of you know, that for young children, they sometimes, even though the question may sound very profound or deep, they may really, at their developmental level, be quite okay with a very straightforward and simple answer. That does not necessarily need to go into a lot of detail unless they ask. For somebody who's a bit older and a bit more developed, usually, we're happy to try and help if we have a relationship with the child and the family for a while, to try and sit down and have that discussion with them, if they want to talk to us. If they want something even more in-depth, using a, the assistance of a behavioral psychologist or therapist can be really, really helpful. And then for the older teen or young adult, especially if they're talking about pregnancy, pregnancy risk, children, a genetic counselor can be tremendously helpful in helping what we consider as, you know, pre-pregnancy or pre-conception counseling.
Colleen, I have a question for you about, about that. Do you ever meet with parents and their children or their teens to talk through some of those kinds of issues? And if so, how would a family go about having that happen?
Yeah, you know, it comes up during the conversations. And I think even trying to be proactive, you know, as individuals and adolescents age, right, and become sexually active, it's really important for them to understand what their risk might be to have a child, and really what kind of options might be available to them. So we do try to start having that conversation sooner than later. And sometimes it might be with the parent, and then the parent and the child, or just the child by themselves as they start to age into young adulthood. And then we can connect them. I work in the pediatric and adult side with a prenatal person on that, you know, as they're ready to kind of have more further testing or explore options with their partner, you know, or if they have a serious boyfriend, we bring them into the conversation. And so I really think kind of having that connection's really important, because the last thing you want, they already have a condition, to make it more stressful, you know, and then they kind of become pregnant or, you know, have a child, and they really didn't understand kind of the consequences to all of that. So we try to be proactive as best we can to educate them.
I have a marker question for you all. This is something that comes up in my conversations with families a lot. I kind of would ask, I want to ask each one of you to do this for me. If you were a person who was a newly diagnosed family, and you had to tell somebody what was going on with your child, and you know, you can give one example, but a broad example of what you might say, because a mom just this week said, I went to the school and I just stood there, and I couldn't think of what to say, or explaining mitochondrial disease to them in the simplest terms so that it made sense for what my child needed, but that, that I didn't put too many words in it. Because once you start talking about inheritance and all of the things, the, you know, the teachers don't understand. So Dr. Perik, what would your two seconds, what is mitochondrial disease to a outsider be? What would, what would your little statement?
So that, that can be tough to do, because, because it is so complex. But the most simplified way that we go about this is that we say that this is a genetic or DNA condition, and it causes problems with the body-making energy. And we leave it at that unless somebody has more questions. And it might cause, you know, if they're asking, well, is that why you may talk a certain way, or walk a certain way, or move a certain way, and then the answer would be yes.
Colleen, what do you, how do you advise families?
That's pretty much it. You know, I think it's something just emphasize, right, they're not going to grow out of it. So saying it's something genetic, this isn't like a short-term situation, and that it's just that their body has a different way of making energy. And once again, it answers a lot of questions, whether they need to have snacks, or certain accommodations for gym class, or other things that really can be broad-focused.
How about you, Dr. Genetski?
No, usually what I say, and this is actually what I say also when I first meet a family, and I'm trying to explain what I'm doing there, I say, mitochondrial diseases affect the way that our bodies make energy from food. And so kids and people with mitochondrial disease make energy differently. And since every organ system in our body needs energy in order to work, this can affect every organ system in the body.
Nice. I'm going to keep this recording, that's for sure. And, and take little snippets of it to be able to send off to families. So how about you, Pat? Oh, where'd you go? Did she disappear?
Yeah, it looks like it, Margaret.
I think she disappeared. Oh, she's coming back. I think she clicked off her audio instead of her video, or video instead of her audio.
Everyone, what a way to announce my answer. Okay.
It's a brownout.
I, I say, every human body, every part of every human body has batteries to make it run. And what this person has makes their batteries different, makes what their batteries can do different. Now, that is very elementary and very baseline. And if, but I really love it, because when we talk about energy, when we talk about this kind of intangible thing that we're trying to grasp onto a battery, or something that we can, you know, equate to an iPhone, you know, like there's, there's slots and there's chunks. And the other thing that I'll say about this is, I think it's important to remember to revisit this over time, given the nature of the diseases that we're working with. Understand that there are going to be questions, and, and there's going to be information that's going to be different at different life stages for, for people. And so while, you know, someone might have an opinion, or a thought, or a worry at one point, especially with our young people, I think, as they kind of move through those already really complicated stages of development, I just want to encourage everyone to feel free to revisit those kinds of conversations.
And then I have one other question that I want to do around the horn. I thought about these today before we were together and definitely wanted to, I think all of you've been in the mito space for a good while. And I think you have a unique position to be able to think about and describe where hope fits. Where is hope in this, in the, in the mito space right now? I recently was in it, just this week, was in a sort of a think tank. And one of the things that came across multi, all the different diseases, that hope is super important. And where do you find the most hope in the, in the mito space? And I'm going to start with Dr. Genetski.
Oh, gosh. So you know, one of the first things that I say to families all the time is, it's really important to have lots of different things to hope for. It's, you know, I have families who hope to have a miracle cure, and I hope that with them too. I hope every day that I'm going to wake up, and today's going to be the day that I see on the newspaper, like Nobel Prize winner cures mitochondrial diseases, all of them, right now. And it's also really important that we think about, if that doesn't happen, what else do you hope for? Do you hope, gosh, we'll be able to get your symptoms enough under control, that you'll be able to do that thing that you really want to do at the end of the year? Do you hope that you get to spend more days outside of the hospital? Do you hope to just be more comfortable? And I think it's, I've learned a lot from all my patients, that this is a really personal and individualized question. And I think, when I think about my personal hopes for mitochondrial diseases, they're really focused on that individuality, that each person who comes into my office is a person with mitochondrial diseases. And I want to support them, and them being the person they want to be in the world. And the most scientific way of that happening is starting to get individualized treatments for mitochondrial diseases and personalized care, which I really think we're making progress towards.
Absolutely. I would like to call on Colleen next.
Yeah, and I would agree, of course, with Dr. Genetski in thinking about, this really is individualized, because I think along the journey, and depending on when symptoms began, how long have they had them, were they high functioning, and then started to lose symptoms, is really can look different for each family. And so, you know, obviously, my hope is that we find a cure, and we can prevent these diseases from happening, but really figuring out how we can best support the family. I think someone wrote in the chat, how do you kind of find that energy to like, keep going? And some things that And some things that I've really learned from our patients is really shifting the the blame away from what you can't do to what you can do. And so really figuring out what is going to bring you joy and hope, you could make that rehab back to baseline or other things. But if you don't get back to that, what can we work towards as you know, care team? And that's what I think we try to work with the families to really figure out what that's going to mean for them. To really help to shift that. Because I do think the matter, the patient severity physically, having that mental mindset has really been instrumental and, you know, really helping out the families in variety of ways.
Thank you. How about you, Dr. Preak?
So there, I think there's a lot of things to be hopeful for and about. You know, being in this space for for quite a long time now, I think we've gotten to see so much develop from not having good testing to now having much, much better testing, not perfect, but way better than it used to be. And and what we'd have to put our patients through and not having to do that anymore. Being able to get more definitive answers, being able to get more accurate answers, not just lumping everything together as one kind of mitochondrial disease or or saying something's a mitochondrial disease when it may not be. I think it has been wonderful to see this community grow and to have a community, not just for the families and patients, but also for the for the clinicians amongst us. We have a message board where we can chat and we could ask for advice and ask for guidance as far as what to do with our patients. And it is a really nice, close knit group of people to work with who all seem to get along, which is really good also. And then, yeah, the fact that we've entered the world of clinical trials and that clinical trials are moving forward and that hopefully, very soon, we will have prescriptions we can write for all kinds of mitochondrial diseases, not just certain types of mitochondrial diseases. Some of us consider Friedrichsia tachia a mitochondrial disease, even though it's it's got its own foundation and it's and its own group. And and we have a prescription we can write for them for the very first time this year. And so that's been very exciting. And so, no, I I think there's a lot of development happening in a very short amount of time. I know for those parents and patients out there, it doesn't always feel fast enough. But in the world of medicine and how things move, things have been moving incredibly quickly.
I agree. And how about you, Pat?
Not going to go black this time. I get to see a lot of hope every day because I work in a I happen to work in a location that offers a lot of research and I get to talk with a lot of people about looking forward towards what's going to happen. In terms of what I personally hope for, in addition to the eradication of all mitochondrial diseases and all of us losing our jobs, is kind of a bigger picture of losing my job, which is I hope for a day when people don't have to justify their humanhood or their human experiences. I hope for a day when our world is less ableist and parents don't have to answer questions about what's going on with their kid. And they don't have to explain why, you know, their human body is keeping them from doing what they used to want to do. I don't think that we have to justify that. I know we have to diagnose it and bill it and treat it and try and make it better. But that's my hope and I and I'm hopeful that we're moving towards generations of young people who are willing to kind of join in that fight as well.
Thank you so much. I'm going to go back to the Q and A button and these are more specific questions. I'm see what's up there. Again, you talking about keeping up your your spirits and there's one I have to read it because I I think I was too late to put it up on the on the Q and A, but it's it's really quite cute. This is for you, Dr. Preak. I think you're going to smile when you hear it. For Dr. Preak, what do you do to keep your bedside manner so wonderful? Did you have good mentors that you learn from? What what do you do that helps you help your family so well? And really, I think what they're getting at that is how do you become a mito doc? And how do you become such caring people as the folks that we have on this, on this webcast today? I mean, what brought you here and how did you develop into the clinician that you are today?
Am I starting with that?
Yeah, you're you're starting with it. It was directed to you, but we'll ask the others to pipe in.
So I I have to, I I think there is something a bit more unique about people who deal with individuals who have rare disease or uncommon disease. I I really have not met an unkind person from the clinical side who is in this space. I think we all go into this knowing that we are going to be dealing with complexity as well as no straight answers for our families and patients. And being open to knowing that we're going to have to offer care for a long time and and do more than just doctoring, that we're also going to have to offer support. And so I I can't imagine somebody in training would want to do this if this is not something that they're open to doing. I had the most wonderful mentors. I had Dr. Bruce Cohen, Marvin Nataitch, Chuck Hopple, so a a lot of people who are now retired or almost retired, except for Dr. Cohen, he's probably going to keep going for as long as he can. But but no, so that definitely helped.
Well, and I'm going to ask a different question to you, for you, Dr. Gnetzky. What would a family do, a newly diagnosed family that maybe lives in an area where they don't have a children's hospital in Philadelphia or Cleveland Clinic? What would your recommendation to them be? What would you ask them to do? What do you think the first step would be?
So this is really hard. I have had to like really train myself not to be like, but move, because I want families to be embedded in a community. And I want them to feel like they can live wherever makes sense for them. Usually I tell them, look, I need you to find someone that you trust to be on your team. And that can be, I, you know, we, some of this came up in the queue, but it can be anyone. It could be a neurologist, be a geneticist. Some geneticists are biochemical geneticists and they're a little bit more nervous about mitochondrial disease, but that doesn't matter. It can be a pediatrician or family doc. It doesn't have to be someone who knows anything about mitochondrial disease. It has to be someone who will listen to you. And it has to be someone who is good enough medical instincts that when you say, I'm worried, they either can say, I'm worried too, or you know what, this time I'm not worried and here's why. And then that's, that's to me, good enough. I'll I'll give that person my cell phone number, you know, I'm really happy to work with that person. But if I can't physically be there and I can't, I can only, I can only see patients in Philadelphia. I haven't yet developed a teleporter. I I want someone I trust taking care of my patients. And the most important thing is that they listen and that you as a patient trust them.
I agree with that. And, you know, one of the things I always tell our families is if you have, if you do travel to a another place for your mito doc, you still have to have somebody right there in your community that's going to be willing to take care of the day to day. Colleen or Patricia, do you have anything to add to that? Because I know you probably do a lot of talking about this topic with your with your patients.
What, one quick addition, I I just want to pitch not just the Mitochondrial Care Network, which are expert sites, but we also have launched softly what we call the virtual or telehealth mitochondrial network. And so, of course, if there is a mitochondrial network site in your state, you do not have to travel to it anymore. You can actually connect to them remotely using telehealth. And then there are about three or four sites across the country that will see out of state patients. And so if you go to the Mitochondrial Care Network website, those are listed. And so we do see people from out of town, out of state via telehealth for the first time. And so and it saves people trips and travel and and all of that, so.
And I'm going to ask one of my colleagues to place the Mitrocare Network information in the in the chat. And if you go to that page, that's with the, for the telehealth, they have their own link. Because I found it, Dr. Preak, and have been sending it out to people one day looking at it. So we really do appreciate our Mitrocare Network Centers because, you know, they're willing to put in the time and the work to have this expertise. And I think it's important that everyone take advantage of it. One of the things I also want to talk about while we're on this topic is the Mitrocare Network New Patient Guide. I think it's something really helpful for our families. And I also want to let you all know, you can find it on YMDF's website during Mitou U. But it has also been translated into Spanish. So if you have any Spanish speaking families that you're working with or no, or if you're Spanish speaking yourself, please let us know and we'll make sure you get that. Okay, let me go back to the Q and A. I see.
Just one, I'm sorry, one quick point. As a, as a center of excellence that receives patients from out of state and often has to coordinate that care. And as a center that has had patients actually move to Houston for the purpose of receiving care in our center, I will say that that's not always the best choice. There are lots of complex issues in building a care team. What Dr. Gnetzky said is it is the, it is the truest truth of all the truths. You just need a a caring provider who can listen and centers like the ones represented here can coordinate that care with your local providers. And you might have to work with your insurance to go through a prior authorization and referral process in order for you to be seen at places like our institution, UT Health. You have to go through an entire process before you can even be booked at our clinic. And that's not including the wait time to get to the, so I know that there are these huge hurdles. I just want to encourage you that it is possible. It is something that can happen. There are people that are out there willing to help and there are resources.
All right, thank you very much. That's a very important, and we're going to switch gears a little bit here because I want to get to these, the few questions we have. Some of them are are pretty specific. Oh, I see that you're answering the one I was going to ask, Dr. Preak, so I'll let you go do that. Here's a question, I'm going to, I'm going to shorten it. Is it possible for patients with an adult onset mitochondrial disease to have terrible symptoms and then go through a period where they do okay? Kind of feel good and then it comes back again? And how would we, how do we talk about that or explain that? Especially for our adult adults that are newly diagnosed? And anybody can.
Yeah, I think, you know, we really commonly see that patients with mitochondrial diseases have episodes that are more severe. And then they have periods that are mild for a while. It's not everyone, some people with mitochondrial disease have kind of progressive consistent disease. But episodic disease is really, really common. And usually what I say to people is you may not fully understand what it is that's happening. But something is causing your body to need more energy for a while. And that's not something your mitochondria can keep up with. So you're feeling a lot of symptoms. And then your body's demand for energy comes back down. And then you can have periods where you feel better. That's, I I you know, to to put a cute example, I had a patient who came to me and he was like, you know, I have these recurrent episodes where I feel just like really fatigued and brain fog and muscle aches. And then I go through these long periods where I feel fine. And he didn't know what caused those episodes, but luckily his wife came to the visit with him and she knew that he had much more symptoms when he did very intense physical activity. And I don't, I don't want to, I I don't want to give bad advice for the sake of a good story. Exercise is really good for people with mitochondrial disease. But he would have bertraged really, really, really intense physical activity for long periods of time without a break. And he was more symptomatic. And he hadn't put together that was the reason. But when he chose less intensive activities, that got better again. And so I think that's a really good example of kind of the periodicity that can happen with mitochondrial diseases.
I want to talk about a very frustrating, I I love bringing up all of the frustrating realities of this. When you're someone living with mitochondrial disease and you go through one of these periods of improvement, something that we fight against a lot is maintaining services that are maintaining your health. So you're participating in therapies, for example, you're allotted a certain, you know, number of sessions perhaps by your insurance, or you have certain goals set. And and then in these periods of stabilization or seeming like things are okay, or they're maybe even doing a little bit better for a bit. Then, you know, the the disability office starts wondering if that's really the case. And, you know, I have a lot of parents and patients who express a lot of anxiety to me and a lot of frustration that they're having to wait for another period of regression or another, you know, an event, some kind of regressive episode to happen before they can engage in these things that are keeping them going. I just want to acknowledge that frustration. Yes, we we, these periods of okay, we love hearing about them when they're, when they're not complicated by things that we need, that we, that we have to navigate also. But I just want to also honor the experience that I know a lot of our families have where they're also kind of, it's this battling and unseen, less identifiable or noticeable issue. And again, having to kind of justify that experience.
Oh, thank you for that. That's a, it's a really interesting way to think about things. And and people tell me all the time, you know, when I'm feeling great, people are like, you're not sick. And that's, that's not acceptable. You know, it's just that it's not showing. Let me take another peek in the Q and A. All right. All right. Oh, this is a question, I guess it's a broad question. I'm not going to give as detailed as what's there. Any of this, I guess, is targeted towards any of you that are in the MMS. Will, is there going to be an update for the consensus paper? Coming anytime soon?
So a lot of what was written in the consensus paper for the diagnosis is still quite valid. The main thing that's changed is the types of advances in the genetic testing that we use. And and that just as a natural kind of progression has just happened at at every site and in every genetic metabolic and mitochondrial disease community. There are separate care guidelines that are a little bit newer. They're put out in 2017. And there are in the works some sort of updates in the coming year or two years that are going to be looking at maybe just updates as to kind of information that may be a little outdated in those original guidelines and and may not apply anymore.
Oh, right, well, I would encourage my YMDF colleagues to place the information about the patient care standards document in the chat. If that's what it's called, you can find it and it's in Mitou U and Dr. Preak, that documents, I know you all worked really hard on that. But let me tell you, it goes to every new patient that comes near us. So, you know, we, that's one of the things I talk to all of them about. So it's super important. I wanted to end on a question slash, oh, let me check, make sure that.
I'll tell Dr. Koenig, the president, that we need to, I'll I'll put it on an agenda item for boss tomorrow morning. I'll report it to her.
Oh, shit, yeah, no, she is all over it. She's the one who's.
No, I'm just, I was just. I'm just letting you know that you're you're heard, you're heard by the top level of MMS.
Yeah, there was a a question here that is no longer here, but I did kind of want to end with. How do we, how, what are the best things that you can? how do we, how, what are the best things that you can, you can suggest for, um, for our parents and caregivers out there? What should they do so that they can take care of themselves and take care of their loved ones? Um, what would be your number one thing you'd recommend? I'm going to start with Colleen.
You know, outside of finding a good medical community, really finding your own community, whether that's with other mito families. You know, I think that emphasizes even if you move away from your regular network too, that's very stressful, especially when you have loved ones and other needs. And not underestimating like help, you know, respite care, all of that because just like we're talking about the energy of our loved ones or individuals with mitochondrial disease, right? You can't keep running on a no battery. And so having that 24 hour care, we had a mom that wasn't wearing her CPAP because she was caring for her child through the night because she wasn't getting nursing care. So, you know, that really is defeating the purposes of really making sure you put your oxygen mask on. Because that really makes the most benefit, I think, in the health of that individual. When they have that appropriate care network outside of all the other things that they do on a day to day basis.
All right. I'm going to go to Dr. Prek next.
Yeah, no, um, part of it is truly self-care. Um, you know, a lot of this is a marathon. It, it's not a sprint. Caring for a family member with mitochondrial disease. And so making sure that you are up for that. Um, what we have sometimes seen is a lot of the energy gets devoted to the other family member. Uh, but it ends up taking a much bigger toll sometimes in some ways, um, on the parent or the caregiver. Um, and, um, and, and, and we did then need to really help them with that. And, and we like to make sure that, um, that's getting taken care of as, as soon as possible.
Um, Patricia.
Two things. One, identify one thing that's a part of your life, your plate and that you're willing to delegate. Not, none of, not even able, like, can you just identify something that you're willing to give away? Um, let's start there. That's number one. Number two, um, the practice of radical self-compassion. Um, not just care, but compassion, real understanding of yourself, um, in, in the hopes of eliminating any sense of guilt or shame about this process. The, the burdens of guilt and shame that happen um, weigh us down. And so if I can just encourage you to think about ways to let that burden go.
There you go. Dr. Parek?
Oh no, I, I think I already answered.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Dr. Gennetsky. I have, I have you in a circle one way and in a circle the other way. Sorry about that.
Um, yeah, I think for me, there's two things too. One of them really gets back to that question of hope. And I really encourage my families, and sometimes I'll do this exercise with families in clinic, to come up with a whole list of hopes, things that we think will never happen, right? Like a magic wand will come and take away mitochondrial disease. The things that we definitely will happen, you know, that tomorrow will be a day that you'll get through, that you'll, you'll get five minutes outside, that you'll get a moment where you just appreciate being a family for five minutes, you know? And it's to me, having those things to hope for and look forward to every day, um, are just incredibly valuable. Um, the other thing that I think a lot of my families need to hear, and it's, it's really hard and it's you know, it's really hard for me as a mito caregiver too, is, um, learning to be good enough and not be perfect every day. Um, and saying, you know, okay, like today, the mito cocktail was scheduled at three and it got in at like four thirty. Did it hurt anyone? No. Is that good enough care? Yes. And I think a lot of my families really carry the burden that like, if I loved my kid, I would give the mito cocktail exactly when it was scheduled or, um, it's really important to accept where we are and, and what's good enough.
Well, thank you. And I want to, um, encourage all of the folks that are on today to take a look at UMDF event, event calendar. I want to invite every single one of you to any support meeting you might need if you're feeling like you need it, even if it's one that isn't where you live. We have people just pop in if they're, if it's a day that they need it. But the two big ones, we have one on the first Thursday of each month. That is the, um, adult virtual support meeting. And it's for anywhere in the world. And then we, on the third, um, Monday, we have parent and caregivers. So I'd love to see you there. Um, if you can, if you are going to be attending, um, mitochondrial medicine 2023, you can stay on now because we're going to go through a little bit more of what to expect, but if you're not, um, I want to announce that the next Ask the Mitro Doc webcast will be live from mitochondrial medicine 2023. It's, um, going to be Saturday, July 1st at 10:30 AM to 11:30 AM Eastern Time. Um, it's a little bit different than we've, uh, done in the past and it's, it's combined one. Parents and caregivers and, um, affected adults. We have a ton of different doctors that are a part of it. And I wrote them down and I can't read my writing. So, um, we'll go ahead and, um, you can take a look at our program and see all the doctors that are going to be there. We have like seven or eight. So it should be a really exciting session, um, for those that, of you that are going to be attending symposium. I hope you'll stick around for a little bit while I invite Kara Stripmadder and Nicole Wilson back on. I also want to say thank you to Dr. Parek, um, Colleen, um, Dr. Gennetsky and Pat for your expertise, your kindness. Um, the people that you take care of are lucky. So thank you for being here with us tonight. And we hope to see you all in just a few weeks.
And I just want to point out too, that, uh, Patricia, Pat will actually be at mitochondrial medicine and we'll be doing a coffee and conversation and kind of share some more information to anyone that is there on Saturday morning. So we're looking forward to having to be there for our families. Thank you all so much.